Yeah, there's, there's some, there's something over there. Six thousand and something. I think the six zero zero point zero zero at the end is incorrect. Although why it's eighty seven cents is a little off.
Eight hundred and seventy six cents.
Yeah, yeah, that too. What is the thing, what are the zeros after the eighty eight hundred and seventy six cents? Well, roughly we charge you for gas.
Now it's six oh one.
It's six o'clock, please rise for the flex. Hey.
So close.
Look at that. Our magic siren. Now we have to adjust it one minute back.
I mean, my phone says six o'clock.
Yeah, my phone says six o'clock.
My computer says six oh one.
What does the computer know?
It goes by the nuclear work clock.
All right. This is our regular board meeting for November third. Tomorrow is election day. First up, we're gonna have Dan Hersberg from Hersberg in Hersberg. Give us an update on the stormwater and some site revisions to the Daughters of Charity at ninety six Menander Road. Dan, I know it's six hundred pages, but please, uh, don't go through all six hundred. Give us the short and
Great reading.
Give us the short and sweet, uh, version of, uh, of what are the changes and how does it impact the site plan? And then what do you need from us?
Need help? Easier said than done.
Just hold it, Dan, we got it. There you go.
Just put on the seats.
Yeah.
Diane will hold it for it.
The, uh, the change we made to stormwater management aren't huge. We had a swale down this, um, emergency exit road and a swale down the central road. Um, because that wasn't passed in our system at all. The major systems don't stay the same. We had a secondary pond here and this is, this is a rain guard. So the basics of this, it stayed pretty much the same. Site plan, we used to have a rectangular building here. That was cut down. And the reason is that it kept us away from the top of the slope where we had to do a lot of, where I'm to a lot of rock. So we're trying to avoid the rock excavation at that point. The number of units stayed the same, the, um, they're, they're configured somewhat different. These are the four trees that ought to be saved. And there's another tree called the sacred oak down here. That we, uh, instructions from the sisters, we may not touch that sacred oak, so. We have something in our plans of for everybody to learn.
Did they explain that? I, I don't know about this. She explained what it is.
Yeah, my understanding is it was planted from an acorn that came from somewhere, uh, and the sisters have been nursing and, and managing this tree since the creation.
It's actually behind the building, you don't see it from the front.
Yeah. It's really a pretty tree, so, I mean.
It's a wonderful tree and we wouldn't, we wouldn't take it down if we could avoid it anyway, so.
I mean, it's a sacred tree, it's great, isn't it?
So let me ask you a question, will any of the water sewer lines cut nearby that? Because if the roots get cut.
No. We're avoiding it quite a bit. We stay out from it, yeah. We normally, we normally try to stay twenty feet away from the center of any tree and that gives enough, so these, if we cut roots, there are smaller roots at the end which can do make themselves.
All right.
And other than that, the plant stayed pretty much the same. We have introduced four buildings that are a different format, but it, it held the same number of units that we used to have before. Some of the IO units were moved over here so it could change the size of that dome.
Where's the, where's the memory unit now that, the, uh?
This is the memory.
Okay, that's, okay.
And I use that cord guard.
Um, so did, did, uh, um, did LaBella provide a letter? Uh, did Matt provide a summary? Um, he did to you to correct, Dan?
No, I didn't get it.
Oh, okay.
If I did, it, it must have come with the city after I left the office.
No, it didn't come, I didn't get it anytime.
Okay, was it, did they need to?
Uh, nothing's really changed, I mean, just the, the format of the building, but the, we actually added stuff here.
I thought Matt already provided the, the, the letter, uh, with their recommendations based on the changes. And so this is simply us hearing from you, the changes.
Yeah, just because we're just gonna amend the, the
So is this a pre-site plan?
The site plan, the site plan's already been a bruise, this is just amended, the site plan, they'll get that out.
And, and everything I think before was subject to final review.
Okay.
By LaBella, we're so confident with that because, you know, if they, somebody else comes up that they think that we ought to address, we're willing to address and have to thank.
All right, does anyone from the board have any further questions?
I do, yeah, uh, the, the swales that you have toward Menander Road. Was the purpose of that to keep water from going out into the road or?
Yeah. If the road is tanked in this direction.
Yeah.
It was running before, even though we did a calculation to show that we're actually discharging less water onto Menander Road. Significantly less water onto Menander Road than now because right now, this entire system here goes right down into here, so about half the site was generating right onto Menander Road. Was intercepted that. And the swales, we had, we, we had nothing for these, so those were discharging out here. By putting these swales in here, we're able to detain that water and discharge it to our system.
Okay, and once they go into the ponds, is it just like a slow kind of percolation into the?
This, this here is called as extension detention basin. And the deal is that water from a rainstorm will go up in there. And normally it takes forty eight hours to go back down to its pre-storm level. So if you have a storm that lasts for a day, that's one day, and then you got forty eight after that, so it might be seventy two hours where water level on this is higher. But it keeps on going down to re, restore its original level. Original level are these smaller circles in here. Those, that's actually the level that it'll be at normally. And when it, when it fills up, it'll fill up to the, to the outside line. This line here, move this even, down a hundred year storm, so. You know, it won't happen that often theoretically.
Well, like, how will they come in the world?
We've had three hundred year storms in the last ten years of the war, so.
Yeah. Okay, uh, anyone from the public have any questions?
It'll be online.
Uh, do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion and to amend the site plan for ninety six Menander Road Doors of Charity, the province.
As submitted. Anyone want to make them motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the amended site plan.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dan, good to see you.
I have my glass of warm milk, is that the deal?
Thanks, Dan.
I'll send you a copy of the, uh, resolution tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, I got you, give me a hand there, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Do I carry that down the stairs for him, Bill?
Here you go.
Bill, can you carry that down the stairs? Or is he taking, are you taking the elevator?
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
We need a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
On motions?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Warrant number, warrant, warrant ten twenty two twenty five general, three thousand four hundred and ninety five dollars and thirteen cents. Warrant number ten twenty two twenty five, one thirty one twenty five. Warren, ten twenty nine six thousand five hundred and eighty four dollars. Six thousand five hundred and eighty four dollars. Warrant number eleven, general. Eighty seven thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty nine cents. Water, six thousand six hundred and thirty two dollars and twenty seven cents. Sewer, one thousand six hundred and eighty, correction, seventy eight dollars and fifty cents totaling ninety five thousand four hundred and twenty six dollars and thirty six cents. Payroll number eleven. One hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and six dollars and forty five cents. Capital projects, one hundred and forty seven thousand four hundred and thirty nine dollars and forty seven cents. And there's no transfers at this time.
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, warrants.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Of course, David leaves.
Um, let's, let's do the, uh, go to Everbridge.
Wow.
So Don and I had a, a meeting with Everbridge, uh, to talk about some of the functionality. Um, it has some enhanced functionality that we are going to be looking into. Uh, employing basically the, the notices that we send out can go automatically to Twitter, to Facebook, to, uh, our webpage, once we get our, our webpage, a plugin applied to our webpage. So basically messages can, that are sent out can go to a whole host automatically. Uh, it's some advanced functionality, so when we discussed this with, uh, another provider, uh, we found out that Everbridge could do some of the same things, so.
And the other problem with the other providers were that they would do email, telephone calls included, but every time you sent out a text message, it was per, per text message. We sent out, when we do a, a mass thing, it's over seventeen hundred people that we send it to.
So while the initial fee per year was cheaper, in, in the end, we felt it was gonna be more per year, so. Uh, gov, gov, uh, gov dot, go.gov.
And we also talked to civics.
Civics, civics plus. So Don and I negotiate, talked to Everbridge and asked them what their, what their best deal, uh, would be and Tom taken.
Originally, the, the quote was gonna be, don't call me exact numbers, I forget, I should have wrote them down, I didn't have one, so. You're in the, on the random, take it. Was gonna be sixty two, six thousand six hundred, six thousand two hundred and forty five dollars and sixty six cents. The first year, then it goes up approximately two hundred dollars every year for the next three years, this is only a three-year contract. What we negotiated with them was for, we had a five-year contract and they'd keep the price the same for the five years and it would be sixty one, I have her in front of me, why don't we get? Six thousand one hundred and forty, sixty nine dollars and eighty seven cents, the same for all, um, five years. So it'll be no price increase for five years. And we get, we're actually, they're actually coming out with some other things in the next couple of years that we'll, we'll get at no charge, so won't get any additional charge.
And Jason's gonna get trained on, uh, some of the functionality of Everbridge.
So if we didn't get the other bells and whistles.
It's the same price.
Same price.
It's included, but we just never really use it, so.
Like, it has conference calling and other, like, I was looking at the, the proposal. There's a lot of stuff, I was like, we don't use that.
But it's, it's, it's all, it's, it's a program.
It's a package deal.
Package deal, it's already in there, so if you ever wanna use it, we can use it, if we don't need it, we don't use it, but it's, but we went to the other companies, I
It was thirty nine, like gov dot go, or go.gov was thirty nine and change, plus you pay for packets of, of messages, text messages, and it was, it was very complicated. And so, at the, in the end, it would have, we would have been worried about sending text messages and so, it, it, uh, this is, there's no cost, the cost is the cost, it's sixty one eighty
We can send, we can send out messages every day if we wanted to.
Well, I don't think people want, they don't want to get the messages every day, but.
But if we had to, because.
Okay.
So we're suggesting we stick with Everbridge and, um, renew the contract.
Does the contract is up the end of this year?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's, yeah, because it's, it's actually, yeah.
December.
So we should
And what were we paying? Is this what we were paying, or is it still a little higher?
It's
It's very close. Basically, they're, they're sticking, they're saying, well, whatever this year's renewal is, they're sticking it for the next five years. Instead of increasing. The last, I think last year it went up five percent.
Yeah, I mean, historically, they went up between, I mean, when we first started, when I first became ten years ago, it was like fifty, six hundred dollars, you know, now it's only sixty one, you know, roughly. So they don't go up a lot, but it's
I thought it did.
Well, I mean, the one year went up five.
Right.
But
So can we, uh, amend the resolution to include the effective date of, you know?
Yes, effective upon the renewal one.
Oh, we have to, because I, I have to sign and, well, we've signed the contract and sent back to
All right, we'll just say effective the, on, on the renewal date. Need a motion?
I'll make the motion, uh, to authorize the mayor to sign the contract, the, the renewed contract. Uh, for, uh, Everbridge, uh, for a five-year contract for six thousand one sixty nine eighty seven.
One eighty six.
Yeah, don't.
I'll second.
All those in favor? David. Let's talk about the doors.
Talk about the doors.
The doors. Come on, baby.
Re- go backstory, uh, in our quest to ever evolve and try to not limit ourselves to certain apparatus. Uh, our main issue has always been the approach angle into the building and the doors themselves. We can look into different options, which I believe you guys have three quotes. Uh, two are substantially less than the third. Uh, but the third ones for one hundred and thirty one thousand two hundred and thirty three dollars are for much nicer looking doors and more energy efficient doors. So Brian came to, came to me, um, and said that there was an opportunity to use the remaining balance of the energy efficiency grant that the village had received. Um, I, quite frankly, couldn't bring myself to show the village a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollar quote for doors. Uh, so I was fully in favor of initially going with more of the steel roll-up that you see on commercial buildings that have the large blocks on the outside and the steel doors that come down. Um, not the most aesthetically pleasing, but reasonably priced for what would have given us the ability to look at different apparatus and upgrade the doors since they're from the early to mid eights. Uh, when Brian came to me with that proposal, uh, he then reached out to the people that were in charge of the efficiency grant. He explained what we were looking to do, they said you can absolutely use it for that. Uh, with a couple stipulations that we were able to upgrade the door themselves. Uh, initially, the door was rated at an R value of somewhere between six and seven. Uh, we've increased the R value to an eighteen with some upgraded insulation. The doors themselves, uh, open sideways, so they're bifold or accordion style doors. Um, the opener is sits right above the door itself, opens and closes, I can show you guys a video before I leave.
Did we link the video? Did I put the video on there?
I probably just sent it a text message down, I don't know if I sent it in email or
Can you forward an email?
They're pretty cool, they open and
Yeah, it's
It says seven seconds.
Seven seconds.
Seven seconds, um.
I, that was pretty impressive to me.
Can you forward an email and then I'll forward it to them and they can see it. Or, uh, as I do that, what I can say is, um, there was also a surplus in my budget um, that would offset the difference in the one hundred and eight thousand to the one hundred and thirty one thousand. Uh, so I would, out of my budget, use twenty three thousand two hundred and thirty three dollars. And then the only thing we would have to do after that is supply an electrician to run the power. They have since sent us the electrical configuration, which I forwarded to Don.
And, and the electrician is looking at it. The good part is, we don't have to go, it's, it's three-phase power. We have three-phase power in the store downstairs in the firehouse, so it's just running the, the power to there, and one thing that we, we found out is, instead of having to run three links, we only, we run one. And it'll be just dropped down from that, so it'll be a lot less than the original thought.
So ultimately, tonight, I am here to request that the village accepts the proposal from Overhead Doors of Albany for one hundred and thirty one thousand two hundred and thirty three dollars plus additional fees for the electricians.
So the way that we, the way that we got here was, there's, uh, we've done a couple of, of improvements uh, using the hundred and thirty five thousand dollars that we got in climate smart money that must be committed by the end of this year, by December thirty first, not yeah, not, uh, completed work, but, but committed. So we did the insulation, we blown in insulation upstairs, that was, uh, roughly ten thousand dollars. Uh, we just did the firehouse stairwell roof with insulation and that, that roof was horrible, they, uh, put foam board insulation underneath the rubber roof, and so that was seventeen and change, right? So we have a hundred and eight thousand dollars left. Uh, there were no other projects in the scope of work that was done, uh, in the energy audit that would uh, that would pay back. Uh, and seeing as the fire doors are the, the largest surface on the front of the building, uh, and the R value is significantly better than current, which is probably an R two, you know, with just a metal, you know, a metal door. Uh, and the quickness of the operation, I, I asked, and initially it was not included in their report, but they, and going back, they suggest, they, they expanded the scope to say that all doors that can be insulated should be included, and this surely includes the fire doors. So they, they agreed that it would be a valuable, uh, improvement and capable of reimbursement for the grant. So that's when David and I started talking and said, well, how can we maximize the R value, and they did, they, they boosted it up uh, to an R eighteen and, uh, basically, uh, uh, initially they charged a sales tax and it was a wash between the additional insulation and taking out the sales tax that we, we're not responsible for. So essentially, this will allow us to use every dollar that is, has been granted to us for the hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. Once this project is complete, we will then work with the state system to get all of the hundred and thirty five thousand dollars in total improvements reimbursed to the village, and that will come in under the, the grant's line of the revenue side. So this is, basically, we're using every dollar that we've been given, um, and, you know, the, 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 only the portion that's coming out of David's budget is an actual expenditure of the village. So, um, this is a, you know, this is, I think this is definitely a win, so. Um, that's how we kinda got here.
Do you have any idea what it's gonna cost for the electric?
I, I'm not gonna bet, I mean
David, what was it, what was it to, did we do three-phase for the, uh, for the compressor?
Yeah, I don't have that bill off, and I do know that I would still have a surplus of roughly twenty thousand dollars in my budget.
I think, I think, I think the compressor was like two or three thousand dollars from the brothers.
Probably be under ten thousand dollars.
It shouldn't even be that.
I don't think it would be that, well, you know, with three-phase, I mean, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm not a, I know they get a lot of money per hour.
Yeah. People get you for some labor these days, so.
I mean, I don't remember the generator and, or the the compressor install being that ridiculous, so, anyway. But, yeah, yeah. Nick, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion for the firehouse to purchase the bay doors from Overhead Door Company, uh, the flex rolling doors, uh, one hundred and thirty one thousand two hundred and thirty three dollars and a hundred and eight thousand to be covered by the NICE circuit grants.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Uh, Don, I had to text you because it said that file was too large to send the email. What I can do real quick was just show you guys what it looks like.
Don, can you put it on the screen?
I don't know if I can add or not, so it'll be layout C, so it'll be the two rows of windows.
How long are they gonna be?
Some sort of red, they gave us a laundry list of
Some sort of matching to brick red or some sort of
A little darker of a red, but it'd be similar to that. So they won't all open and close at the same time, that's just how these guys have it set up.
It'll be individual for the trucking.
Yeah. Or we'll have one that's designated like we do now, that if dispatch needs to open it, that opens it up, so.
And they tuck right away.
Yep, they tuck right away inside, so you don't lose any height, and we shouldn't lose any height or any width on the inside as well.
How are they, once, once they're folded in, are they protected in any way, or?
Inside the building and then they have like protective rubber guards on the edges themselves, and then there is still the safety requirement for lasers and pressure sensors. So, in theory, also, we shouldn't have any issues with people pulling out the doors, closing on people anymore, because now you can see that they're open. Which we had in the past, so. Unless it's on your own gaming vehicles.
Yeah. Thank you, David. Oh wait, what, um, one more thing, yes, can you stay for this conversation? So, uh, we have roughly a hundred, uh, water users where we have to manually read the meter.
Meter, yeah.
And, uh,
For commercial?
Yes.
And it's upwards of two hundred.
Upwards of two hundred, excuse me. Um, other municipalities impose a fee for those, that, that they, the commercial ones have the option to upgrade their meter to be read, uh, remotely, which we encourage, so that we can discover discrepancies, catch leaks faster, et cetera. Uh, those that do not install a new meter uh, with the radio reader, we have to read manually. So, uh, other municipalities impose a per-read, uh, manual read fee. So I would like to match other municipalities and charge fifty dollars per read, so basically twice a year. Uh, for them, so that becomes in, to their advantage to replace their meter with a radio head, so that we don't ever have to go there, some of them are in
Is it per meter? That, I, I don't know if I'm allowed to kinda ask questions, like, as the person that has been doing it. So like, for example, we'll use Dutch Village, uh, they have twenty something meters, so they would accrue twenty charges of whatever the rate is set at. So it'd be a per meter reading charge?
That's how other municipalities have it, is per, per meter. Why don't, why don't they convert, you know, the question is, and we've been asking this for how long?
We've been asking them specifically for a long time.
So replace your meters and get the radio. You know, and I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but some of these basements aren't fun to go into to
Not climbing over washers and dryers to read water meters or into Dunkin' Donuts where probably don't wanna necessarily get their coffee and their donuts if you saw the basement.
So, um, that aside, uh, uh, I mean, that's how others, you know, charge it, basically, it's, it's, i- i- if we have to do something manual, you get charged an extra fee.
How long have we been in communication? Like, I remember getting, you know, having to have, make an appointment to get the people come to put the radio thing in my house. So how long, how long have we had them and how much communication have we had with these people about, like, hey, do this?
Commercial properties are different because they own their water meters.
Ah.
We can essentially encourage them to do that, to update their
So what I'd like to do is, starting, it's a
How much is it, what is the expense for the commercial properties to replace twenty five water meters?
It's a question.
Significant.
Water meters, I don't actually know that.
They might be well indeed to fifty bucks, but
The one that, the meter that's at, um, Morgan Lennon was sixty thousand dollars. But the one at Dutch Village is probably maybe roughly five thousand, you know, size of it, maybe.
Well, they have twenty five.
Yeah.
And they're, but they're required to replace their meter after
Twenty years.
Twenty years. And some of these have been installed in the fifties.
Before we even got, before we even got the radio read meters, we had a, we sent out a letter out to all the businesses saying that your meter is over twenty years, it needs to be replaced. And hardly anybody did anything with it until we started really pushing it. Because the problem is, after twenty years, they're not reading accurately and they start, it was, it was, they were getting more water than was going through the meter. So it was costing the village.
I see. That's what happened to Village One, right? Isn't that how we had, was it Village One?
Yes.
How many of these are personal homes?
I'll tell my head, maybe twenty, twenty five. I think the meter project that I think the meter project itself that was completed was completed to the satisfactory rate of like ninety-eight percent.
Yeah, that's, that's about right, yeah.
It's the ones who haven't installed it are known to us.
Houses that are actually like abandoned or have never entered their door. For the most part, we've been able to get into most of them outside of a handful, but it's probably.
Was there, there was one or two that we couldn't get the water to shut off, or is there a problem with the water shut off?
Sounds all right. Which is ultimately still on the homeowner's responsibility for the village, because the village isn't responsible for the water shut offs or the curb stops. So the homeowner is then gonna say, oh, I'm not spending five thousand dollars to dig up my water line to replace my meter, you can still just come.
And the next read is when?
So that, I was just gonna get there. So the uh, the period just ended. Um, so David and the team uh, is gonna start reading this week, next week, this week. Soon, very soon.
Very soon.
For the period, basically, that ended ten thirty-one. So the next read won't be for six months from now. So this will, if we communicate this with those two hundred or whatever, that if they don't, they will get this fee.
We'll write a letter and we'll.
Yes, yeah. With the bill, they're gonna get a letter that says, starting with the billing period of May first.
So we have each of these properties already identified that, you know, that those are the ones that are gonna get this one.
Our system, uh, the Springbrook, Springbrook system can, can identify this. Yeah.
If they're required to replace the meter, they don't, then what's the implication for them?
So we've been talking about that, so, so uh, I'm of the opinion that they should be penalized because there's the potential for loss of water, so they should receive, it would be, be paying a premium for, for that, but we're still debating that aspect of it.
What about, what about?
Hold on, Bill, hold on, go ahead, Mike.
You said the fees that, they charge fifty or is it a hundred, a hundred fifty?
It's.
I mean, if you really wanted to send, get them to do something, you charge them all money.
But it's, you know, how do you, what's the balance? It is fifty.
Yeah, what are these other, who are, who are the other municipalities?
So Troy, um, Colony.
Okay.
Um, it's, you know, uh, municipalities that, that bill more regularly, like Troy bills quarterly. So uh.
Does the software have the capability to keep track of all the different people and assess the fifty dollars? Well, I would have to set up.
Yeah. John, Ellen, Bill.
Now, if the, if the owners fail to replace the water meters, you'll, every, every two decades, what, what, what kind of fines and surcharges would the village report?
We're still working on that aspect. Yeah.
My thanks.
Yep.
I need to know.
Yep. But the, the, the radio reader helps us, I mean, for instance, you know, we had a leak at Wolfert's Roost uh, that the, the water consumption immediately dropped by thousands of gallons a day once they shut down their concession stand. So it helped us figure out by the data that there was a leak between one building and the concession stand. And they, sure enough, they went and they fixed it, and then when they turned the, the water back on to the concession stand, they didn't have that usage anymore. So it, it, the radio readers help the customer, uh, it's not just for us.
Thanks, Frank.
Sure, Bill. So the fee would start with the billing period of November first.
That doesn't give red until May, right, so they would have.
That's correct. Anyone wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
So any second. In seconds.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? I know, fifty dollars, never fun to. But um, where are we? So uh, I was gonna report back tonight about our discussions about the sewer contract. We're still waiting for some final details with Lobella on what they have calculated the uh, the actual rate to be. So we'll table that for the meeting on the seventeenth to officially set um, uh, the rate for the twenty-six uh, sewer agreement year. Um, we did receive some communication from the town of Colony today uh, with their payment for the flow for um, um, the last period, for the, for the last period um, and uh.
The one we sent back.
Plus.
To save it.
Yeah. Their assertion is that they, they paid on time and in full when they did not. So uh, Steve and I are gonna work on a response on to that tomorrow and I'll copy the board. Um, actually, I can send that letter to the board um, uh, later tonight, it just came, but this afternoon. But we're still working on that. Um, okay, a couple of things, um, as a backup and compliment to Ryan Handerhand for uh, doing fire inspections to help Lyle. I gave everyone a copy of a resume for Dave Massaro, he was recommended by uh, Chief St. Chelis, um, someone that he know, he's known for a long time, he's a retired assistant chief at Glenville Fire. Um, he is also a code enforcement officer, he's got tons of training on fire and inspections. Uh, I would like to add him to our, our list of fire inspectors to get caught up. Uh, Ryan's had some other things that he's been working on and so we're, I don't want us to get behind again. So I wanted to add him as a, a backup, as a fire inspector for commercial properties. He'd be offered the same thirty-five an hour that we pay, uh, that we pay Ryan Handerhand. And basically, he bills for his time, he's not on salary, if he works, he works. And then Mary Jane creates an invoice for the work that's been done to bill the uh, the commercial entity that he's been inspecting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to hire Dave Massaro as a fire inspector.
Part-time.
Part-time.
A second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Uh, talking this afternoon, and he's, he's a really smart guy and I think he'll be. Let's see. We're looking into installing some uh.
Just the merit report?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're.
Yep, some I hydrants, uh, Don and I got, uh, oh no, you're not on this. Uh, Lobella is proposing making four of the hydrants in the South End project basically smart. They have meters in them that allow us to uh, to detect when there's a water break. You wanna talk about them, Tom?
Yeah, yeah. They have a sensor in them, so that senses what the water flow is, if there's a break and if there's a drop in pressure or volume, it automatically sends on an alert. There's an app on, that'll be on all the water department guys phones and will go right to their phone and say that there's a, there's an issue with, on this hydrant. And Troy just, Troy just started putting in some of their, Mike and, Mike and I two years ago went and saw the demonstration, it's really very impressive how they do it, that it, it can, so we have a water main break, we don't know where it is, but just will sense in the area where it is, because we'll know where it is in that section of. Eventually, if, if this works the way it should, we may buy future ones and put them in different parts of the village so that if there's a water break in the center of the village, it will let us know that a lot quicker.
That was gonna be my question, why are we gonna spend the money to put them somewhere where we're placing the infrastructure?
Cause that's, that, cause this is the time, cause we're replacing all the hydrants in the South End are being replaced. So instead of putting just the normal um, um, fire hydrant, it just gonna be, and it's, it's gonna be edited with the capital budget anyway, so it won't be, it won't be an expense, it's, it's gonna be an expense, but it's not an expense.
Yeah.
But um, it's really, it's very smart technology.
It's basically the four corners of the project.
I was gonna say, is the number based on how the way the water flows?
Yes, exactly, so like, yeah, so.
It looks like a regular hydrant, it's just the sensor is actually in the cap of it, so you don't, you, you won't know that it's there.
No one can mess with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'll give, as we get more into the details, I'll provide that. But it's exciting to get technology working for us.
You'll just, since we're on hydrants anyway. Yeah, I'm joking. Excuse me, um, they um, when we have the new hydrants installed, they're gonna have, they're gonna have storage connections, so the fire department can go up and connect, quick connect on it. But they're gonna be color-coded to um, the size of the water main, so that'll be, so everybody will know that it's either six inch main or an eight inch main or ten inch main. It'll be color-coded and so that, well, they have to do, it's just, you'll know how much water's coming out of it. Plus it'll make a lot quicker, right now, if there's a fire, they have to take out the steamer connection, screw on the other thing, then screw the hose to the steamer connection, and just, this'll make a lot easier for them.
Alright, um, Lobella and uh, the village are still working on the get the lead out with the EPA and we're making some progress on um, on finalizing a plan to help us be successful in the lead um, lead pipe removal project. Uh, like I said, the Skyway roofing did the, the roof uh, above the fire department um, stairwell. Um, CDRPC uh, sent me today a, since, they were working on um, high crash potential intersections uh, of the village and the highest crash potential area that we have is at Ward's Lane and Broadway, um, surprise, surprise, and.
I'm actually surprised it wasn't three seventy-eight and Broad, like the merge there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I, I think they include that, the whole, that whole as one um, as one like block. Um, and I'll forward this to everybody just to see, if you, if you see like this, you know, there's just a lot going on.
So what does that mean?
Uh, I don't know, um, and uh.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, so capital district, regional.
Transportation.
No, no. Transportation Committee, Council. Is it CRTD or is it the planning one?
I don't know, there, there's, there's, there's.
Probably the uh.
Hold on. Yes, you're probably right, yeah, yes, CDTC.
Yeah.
Or CRTC, whatever, they change their name every month, so. Um.
We were just sending that like in a.
Yes, yes, and then we're gonna, and then we're gonna, we're gonna see what, what they recommend, like.
We're gonna use that, they're probably gonna use that.
It's gonna tie into the Broadway, the Envision study, so. Um. No, I think that's.
Well, speaking of which, uh, since that, uh, that and, uh, well, Ivan actually suggested we give the final report to the uh, transportation committee and, and Matt said uh, that you thought that was a good idea, so they would
Sure.
have that on their, on their uh, in the records.
For the Little River?
Yeah, the, the, the whole project down there.
Hold on, let me finish.
Okay, sorry.
That's right. Uh, that's it. Lisa?
I'm good, things are happening at the library, I have no report besides that.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
You're welcome.
Can you give that to Tim?
I sure can.
Sorry, Diane.
Hey, this is for Tim.
Now you got it.
Special delivery.
That's it, I'm good.
Okay, what just happened here?
I have no idea.
I'd like to talk to you about. Wanted to give a liaison report.
Okay.
Send it to me, put it in my briefcase, and I'll bring it up.
Beautiful. Here we go, Nick.
Uh, happy to see the Davis Properties book stop sign and the garbage closer.
Yeah.
But so, like to talk to you about the stop sign on the corner of lines and Manan Road.
Yes.
Going down the hill.
Um, Finale was supposed to come and look, we're, we're just gonna look at a couple, uh, because there's a, a couple intersections in Sky Hollow that we think they're, they don't need stop signs anymore, uh, and uh, uh, so he's, we're gonna set up a time to uh.
Repeat all the signs?
Yes. Um, Manan Road and Lions. Got it, yes.
That's it?
Okay, Tim?
Okay.
Hey, you have a liaison, oh, look at that.
So yeah, so last time I, I presented uh, Kevin Franklin's story report. So thank you, Diane. Uh, gardening education recap, uh, twenty twenty-five. It was another fairly successful year in the village gardens. I continue to use the same sources for plants as in years past with much success. I definitely must mention the DPW staff that was involved in keeping the beds and pots watered during our summer weeks without rain and poor heat waves experienced during July and August. I know from years past how demanding the watering job can be. As always, I will be treating the guys to lunch in December as I have done in past years. My way of thanking them for a job well done, very nice. Next spring, all the village beds will need to be mulched again. We did not mulch this year, except where I added mulch on the beds at two eighty Broadway and the road beds. I look forward to discussion with the mayor regarding the redesign plan for the parking area at two fifty Broadway as it applies to the new green spaces in, in that area. I have.
Oh, downstairs. He's looking for the police.
Oh. I have not had the opportunity to really visualize what those spaces will look like. Unfortunately, we had a little vandalism at the Ganzer Smith Park gazebo. Two of the ornamental flower baskets uh, closest to the Manan Road were stolen sometime in August. These wrought iron baskets were purchased at, uh, as a set several years ago. I will look into replacing the two that were stolen over the winter months. Would you get the same type from the same place or?
I don't know, I gotta talk to.
Or just the same thing happen?
I think Frank, I don't know. I mean, he's got eight hangers there.
Yeah.
You know, they're spaced according to the posts that go up, so it would look kind of, I mean, you either put four and take two hangers down and save two, or try and find two more.
Kids, kids just being.
I don't, they're probably adults.
Yeah, kids wouldn't take.
Yeah. I don't. Not, not.
Forty-pound plant and hanger.
Yes.
Right.
Oh yeah, sure, yeah.
Just, I want it just like.
Back to Don, please.
And uh, we uh, we, you know, submitted the uh, the final report for the Little River project was submitted to the Hudson River Greenway. Uh, the invoices were, the last thing to be done was to show uh, the Greenway that all the uh, you know, the bills have been paid, so uh, Mary Jane put together the invoices and the, and the, and the check payments and they were submitted. And I got a message back that we were successful in our submission, so it should be all set and uh, be looking forward to hopefully uh, getting a, a, a grand check for it.
Whatever happened with the railroad and that piece of.
We're gonna work on that, see, I think what they did was when we, there's a longer section of that than we were thinking about. So they took the whole of what they own and they said, here's the prints for that. And we don't really need all of it, we only need a short section that was within the area that we're discussing, so uh, Matt said, we'll get together and, and we'll show them, we're not talking about all this, we're just talking about this short little area. And maybe that'll make a difference.
Maybe they just wanna sell all of it because they can't use.
Well, I, I mean.
A worthless piece of land for two million dollars.
They, the railroads have been, have been donating pieces of property like this all over the state for, for rail trail and making trail and so on.
Right.
So they don't have to pay taxes on it. And maintain it.
Are they, are they maintaining it now?
Well, no.
No, they're not maintaining, there's nothing there, it's, it's overgrown, nothing, yeah. Um, but they pay the tax, but they, they pay the tax.
Which is pennies to them though.
Right, right, which is nothing.
I know, but one less thing to worry about, anyway.
Right.
Sorry. Good?
Which railroad is it, is it?
Well, it was originally owned by the D and H, but when uh, uh, Canadian Pacific bought the D and H, they took over all these old abandoned rail lines as well, so they just have these abandoned pieces of real estate. So.
Thanks, Tim, Molly?
Um, two things, I sent you and Don the picture of the flooding at the tracks, um, when I was out at the bus stop, three of the neighbors came out um, and pointed out to me. The bigger concern is not that it's pooling on that right-hand side as you're going up the street, but the way they have it set up, there's a drain that runs under the road, but it shoots out into like gravel. So there's, it's not like, there's nowhere for it to go, so. There's nowhere for it to go. So then it's just coming right down the sidewalk, basically. Um, and flooding that area. The second thing I know, yeah.
From the opposite side of your house?
Down the other side where originally, originally we thought was flooding and then it turned out to be a water, a pipe.
Right.
The other day when we got, and I wouldn't say we got like a lot, a lot of rain. We got a decent amount of rain, but that whole area was flooded again.
So it's flooding, it's flooding from the opposite side to your side.
Flowing under the road and shooting out into gravel. Like, so it's not going anywhere.
I mean, look, can we just take a scoop?
But they don't know. We, we can talk. Let's not talk.
Yeah.
On the radio. Where it's flooding, there used to be a gully, just like there was on the other side. Like when I was a kid, there was a gully and we always thought it was to keep the kids off the tracks, which had to jump over it to get on it.
We'll have communications with them.
Yeah. That is correct.
But yeah, it used to be on both sides all the way down.
It's just completely filled up. Yeah.
Um, which they still didn't necessarily do a great job on the other side, but somewhat of them. Um, the fireworks going off on filling house. It happened that night. We were sitting here in the meeting. Halloween night.
Is that what it was?
Yes, Halloween night it went off.
I heard that.
Off about once a week. I don't know who. I could maybe make an educated guess, but I'm just curious if anyone else is like calling and
Am I right?
I, that would be my educated guess. Yes, but um, if anyone else is calling and complaining about, I mean, my dog goes miles, but because it's always just one too, right? So then it's always like, is that what it was? Was it something else like?
They're big.
Um, I'm
Can we maybe just have a conversation?
Well, let's, let's
Yeah, offline.
We'll, we'll
Noted.
Yes, perfect. All right. Um, one more question before I give out the holiday train. Are we doing same plan like road closures? We're gonna have permits?
The whole thing, we're talking about it tomorrow. I just got confirmation that Castleman is letting us use the uh, the parking lot. And so we're, everything is basically exactly the same. Uh, as last year and Don and I are gonna start working on it tomorrow. Ryan and us all, we're gonna have a meeting on I think the
I just had questions like if there's gonna be permits again.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, because that, that worked very well in one April. The only problem I had last year with the whole thing was at the nine o'clock hour, they decided to cancel the bus because they had seven colons or whatever.
Um, so we'll head that off.
We have the village Charlie now. Can use that.
Is it here?
No.
Not here yet?
No, no. But thank you for reminding me. I gotta ask about that.
I mean, we can
We can borrow one.
We can borrow Shake a Roads.
Yeah, yeah. But didn't they cancel last time? I think that's what happened. They canceled.
No, the school bus, the school bus.
Oh, the school bus is canceled. Yeah, yeah. And then we had the expensive Trailways bus.
Yeah.
But anyway, sorry.
But they were comfortable.
Yankee Trail.
Um, the seniors had a great Halloween party. Unfortunately, I had to miss it, but they were, looked like they had a great time. Um, and then they have their holiday party coming up as well. Um, this Saturday, the PTA is doing a fall fest that takes place down in the lower part of the school property down by the soccer fields. Um, and on eleven fourteen, they're doing middle school fun night, both of which they're still looking for volunteers for. Um, tomorrow, the auxiliary will host a bake sale during the election. So don't forget your money. That's all I got.
Thank you. Don? I didn't forget you.
Thank you. Kevin, the historian, all his information and all the files that moves up here. So he's up here, he's starting to get himself organized. Um, I am gonna be he has a laptop that he's had for the last twelve years. So I'm gonna buy him a new computer. Um, and he wants an updated printer too, when he's got his Kodak printer that they don't sell anymore. So I told him, I, I think the bill is gonna afford to get you a new computer and printer. So I'm gonna be, and I'm also gonna order him a, on the best share. So um, as you know, the water meter readings are gonna start this week for the January bill. And the audit reports that you all given is on the, is on the website. That's from Mary Jane. Because Mary Jane didn't want to talk about. That's all I got.
Treasures report.
Okay.
So Mary Jane and I are working on finalizing the twenty-three, twenty-four audit with our auditor. We're hoping to have a conversation with him tomorrow about some of the details. Um, uh, and to explain to us the differences between our old reports and our new reports and what the changes were and anything that is of note. And so we'll report back to the board on that on the seventeenth.
Just for the fact that this is a different company.
That's correct. I think we need him to explain. Yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four and then Mary Jane's already starting on, on working on the twenty-four, twenty-five uh, budget, which is more in total with our new bank, new, new, new accounting system and new person. So um, all right. Uh, anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay.
You did really good.
Public comment. Phil?
Hi. I've heard that the restroom building next to Pavilion Building, yes, is new. Is it gonna get repainted during next year?
Repainted or repaired?
Repainted.
Oh, I don't know about repainted. Probably repainted. Uh, that's the easy part. Repaired is a, is a bigger thing.
I just said only repaint.
Before the beginning of this concert series, it will be repaired as well.
It's gonna be booked in outside the building.
Yes.
I like to propose that this building gets burnt, gets sandblasted, trined, and then repainted. I recommend using either synthetic rubber base or oil baked paint for this restroom building.
It will.
Fine. Now, during early September of twenty twenty-five, around four thirty, I can't remember exactly what date. While driving Menan Road, cross, narrow crossing, I observed one large tree branch that fell into the railroad track between Menan Road and Burke Side Avenue, rail across. Where we had that winds thirty-six miles an hour.
I do.
So I couldn't go to the police station because four thirty was already closed. So unfortunately, I had to go to Molly Harper's house. She wasn't there, but I met the store husband Joe. I told him about the problem. So he reported it down here and then reported it. Canadian
Police, the police were all over at first.
Yeah, Canadian official. So I'm glad that that tree branch finally got removed from the railway track because the reason I was worrying about is whether the train hit that branch, you know, when we can liable to have a serious accident, railroad accident, particularly tank cars which carry oil or hazardous chemistry. We can't have that. That's what I was worrying about. So I'm glad I was able to prevent that potential railroad accident.
Thank you, Bill.
Now, since I proposed removing one yield sign from the utility pool at West End of Cliff Road where it meets Station Street and place the yield sign on its own, a little signpost. So I'm requesting that the village clear brush weeds and trees from the west end of Clifford Road area first and then post a yield sign on its own metal signpost. I would like to see that done, this project done sometime during next year. And also, and around ten of ten thirty of September nine, twenty twenty-five. I'm hearing trains blowing their whistles along railway tracks in the village in northern parts of our village when trains can't be blowing their whistles between seven o'clock at night and seven o'clock each morning, except for emergencies. So I reported the problem to Don Hanigan and Canadian Railroad officials through the Menan Police Station, uh, Police Department. Now, we can't continue to have these trains, trains keep blowing their whistles during that time unless there's some emergency. I know Don Hanigan does his job reporting that to regional officials. But this continues, I'm gonna have no alternative but to write a letter to Canadian Railway officials at the main headquarters in Calgary, Alberta, Canada.
I would encourage that. That would help.
But can I do this on behalf of the village? I don't wanna do this without
Well, do it on behalf of yourself and say that the village is aware.
But this continues. That's what's gonna happen. Well, thanks for letting me speak.
Don's also writing them, so.
Well, thanks for letting me speak on an important topic.
Yep. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome, Doug.
Mike?
Last week, Tim had sent out a letter, I assume to most of the village.
Yes.
From the shortcomings that, from the town. Um, basically treating us as second class, just what is, what are we gonna do about it? I mean, can't use the firing range, can't use the dispatcher, can't do this, can't do this, but we continue to pay and pay and pay. What's the solution?
It's a great question. And uh, uh, um, we're working through each problem at one at a time. Um, I've been trying to uh, work on one issue at a time. Uh, during a meeting with the town attorney, uh, the town made it away, uh, made it clear that they felt that these were all linked. Um, and we're still working on trying to figure out what the path forward is. Um, there's a couple of things that uh, we need to take step by step. Uh, again, the sewer rate issue is uh, is it, there's a disagreement there. Uh, and so uh, we're providing the documentation to justify the rate that we feel is appropriate. Uh, I testified along with Tim at a meeting that was held at the Town of Colony uh, uh, in front of the board about their sewer rates for twenty twenty-six to their customers. Uh, the, the postcard announcing that meeting to customers of the Latham Clean Waters District, including my mother arrived three days after the hearing. I found out about it by a board candidate uh, for uh, for this, this election tomorrow. Uh, and so e- even though my mouth was stitched up from my surgery, uh, I made it there with Tim. We were one of five people who were there to testify because no one, of course, heard about the meeting. Uh, um, and uh, and I made it clear that this, our rates have gone un, unnegotiated for fifteen years. Uh, and that, that it's time for the, the town to pay its fair share. Um, the, the board then still voted for changing their policy on sewer rates going on their water bill like ours do instead of the tax bill and approved the uh, the, the twenty-six budget without really any discussion. Uh, Tim and I both made comments about the fairness of, of the, you know, for that specific issue of the town and the village and our working relationship regarding the sewer services. And uh, you know, it didn't really seem to make a bit of difference. So uh, there are many avenues that we can take, uh, some of them legal. Uh, today Steve and I uh, were uh, communicating back and forth about, you know, what the general law says and what our abilities as a municipality that provides a service to a secondary tier of municipality, what our legal rights are. We'll be exploring those and communicating those as necessary.
Just a second. So within this meeting, they said all those things are like together?
Uh, that, that, that they're linked.
Oh.
I, I, I don't understand that.
Yeah.
It all happened at different times. Like, I don't understand.
Absolutely agreed. And that was the point, you know, for instance, the, the gun range agreement has been renewed every two years for decades. Not an issue. Uh, we're, we're a, a police agency within the town. Uh, they used to, for instance, as a, as a partnership municipality, police department, they used to pay for our ammunition every year. Uh, Mike Woods, chief, two, two people ago, uh, stopped that. Uh, now it's the gun range, uh, which really doesn't cost them anything. And we were one of twenty-six municipalities that they said use the gun range and therefore got a grant to upgrade their gun range. So uh, what that has to do, doesn't cost them anything. Um, except, you know, a, a day's time. Uh,
And it has to be scheduled.
And it was scheduled.
You have to schedule your time to be honest.
But we don't, they don't have they don't have any colony or, it's, it's no cause to them. It's just because we, we have our own instructors that we bring up.
Right. So it's just use of the facility, you know, and uh, and won't sign the agreement. In fact, our time in Ju, in June that we had scheduled for our, our semi-annual training, uh, the week before, they called the chief and said that the supervisor will not sign the, has not signed the agreement. Very disappointing. How that has to do anything with us negotiating fair and equitable sewer rates, I don't know. Um, and um, so that's some of the answer to your question.
You know, one of the candidates came to our home and I asked him that question. What do you do for the village? So he said he would get back to me. So it's, the election is tomorrow. Maybe he'll call me tomorrow.
The, the, the thing that struck me is that uh, I asked if, you know, because this conversation has been going on for over a year with, with supervisor and the town attorney. And I asked that, each of the other board members, were they aware of this matter or situation? And it's been, you know, we sent, we sent a proposed agreement to them. Not one single one of them was even aware. So they're not being informed. And yet they still move forward on their new rates with a piece of information that they were unaware of. At that point, they should have said, well, we'll table this, but they did not. They just moved forward.
They're fired.
Anyway. It was disappointing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else?
Um, Diane?
You know, when I add up my forty years of Town of Colony taxing, you know, it used to be, um, you know, the cops backed us up with this and that and the other thing. What am I getting? With my Town of, besides EMT? I understand the Colony EMT is a, is us. That comes out of our taxes. I so
Yes, well, yes and no. EMS taxes is part of your taxes, but EMS also builds your, your insurance and stuff. It's not a free service. So
Right, right.
If they get EMS actually works that almost equal thing, whatever they get from taxes. They receive from taxes gets paid back to the tax. So they're, they're like a neutral department to them. I mean, there's some expenses there, especially during COVID, it was a lot worse, but but overall, the EMS doesn't cost the town anything. You know, the other, the other things that they say, we, we, we use their town assessor. They, um, we have use of all the school, all the parks and all that.
Anybody does, Don.
I know that he does.
He's answering, he's just answering a question.
But they, but, but we do have, we also have, um, well, the other thing too is the fire, like Shake a Road is contracted with the town. The town pays them over a million dollars a year to be, but they are, they also do mutual aid for us. But that in, indirectly, you know, but all like the other lakes, um, West Boney, if they come down or even Scotty Heights, they're districts. So they're a self taxing entity within the, the town. Um, the other things they're gonna say, the um, we have a shared agreement to use equipment if they, with their DPW, if we need to. We never did it because every time you do it, they were using it. You know?
Don't we use their street sweeper?
That's
Oh.
Um, but that, that it's those thing, you know? And I also, when I, when I first became court, when I found out, you know, really dug into it, they don't have to there's no way to actually find out exactly what they, what services we can get from. The only thing that they can't, because we have our own DPW, they can't, they have to take a portion of our taxes. They can't put it towards DPW because they have their own and we have our own, or our police. The police state, but the police, they have, it's like fire departments mutually, so they both I don't know, but some of the police, the cost is going to the police.
We, we cover Scott, this Bansville area. I've never seen them come down this way.
So generally, if there's a call, for instance, in Skylar Flats Park, guess who's the first one there? We are.
Uh, when, when I worked, when I was a dispatcher, it's what, I don't know what it is today, because I have dispatched in ten years, but Colony and Menan used to, we used to back each other a whole time. And then there was times when we had an arrest going on that was like a felony arrest. We had, had both officers in here. Colony actually came down and actually had a car stationed down here. I mean, it was rare, but it was, you know, they think, they always come down. If we called, they would come. But I don't know what it's like today. I, I mean, I can't tell you that because I haven't seen a colony car down here. It was, well, we haven't had the need either that I know of.
I don't know if that answers your question.
I get a lot.
Yeah.
Or when you add it up over, you know, ten to
Before with the meeting started tonight, we would talk about like what the town clerk can do versus what
Yeah.
Don can do. Don can do. So you get your dog license and a marriage license.
But you gotta pay for it anyway.
But you're gonna pay for it. You're gonna pay for it. Uh, the Town of Colony Library is the outer parts of the village. They're in their service area. Um, yeah.
Town of Colony is our E911. Uh, uh, public PSAP, uh, safety area is something. So, uh, that, so when you dial 911, it goes to Colony. When you dial, so Colony, and this is the, this is why it was such a reasonable transition for them to dispatch our police as well, was 911 goes to Colony. Fire gets dispatched from Colony and EMS gets dispatched from Colony. So when we asked them to simply add the police, when somebody needed a police officer, it was like, you're already doing all this stuff already for us. Um, but they do, they are.
This is why when you call 911 and you say you're in Menan's, you have to talk to three people.
Well, they, they would then, they, if you say police, they would then send that to Albany County. Because Albany County dispatches our police.
Most people are calling 911 from their cell phone and you're hitting the state police, then they turn through to Colony, then you get.
Yeah. Depends on where you are, which cell tower. If you hit Detroit cell tower, you can either get state police or Troy.
My experience, my experience was the three, three phone calls.
Yeah. So I mean, if you just say Albany County dispatcher, Menan's dispatch, then by now they, they, they'll direct you to the right, to the right place. You just, but again, it's another step. But so again, that was something where we asked and Colony said no. Without really any realism, you know, so. Anyway, uh, Courtney has a question online.
Hi, this is Courtney Jesskula. Um, I just wanted to put in a plug for the, um, food pantry at the Menan School. Um, we've reopened our link online and we're collecting donations at the Fall Fest this weekend. Um, we do have some kids in the district with um, food insecurity and some families with food insecurity, and we're trying to stock up our pantry just in case, um, families have any interruption in SNAP benefits. So, um, just encouraging community members to consider making a donation to the food pantry at the school. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. And, uh, we've had some meetings with Albany County, uh, the, uh, Executive's Office and, uh, and I've been in communication with Jen from the school uh, district as well to try and figure out if, uh, there are some, uh, assets that are available locally. So we're working on that. Hopefully they fix it in Washington.
Actually, as I was going out, up the door, Trump is releasing.
I guess it's half the SNAP benefits, uh, so, um, so, you know.
Courtney, can you, uh, give me a call tomorrow?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or it's regards to that, oh, you know, that we talked about this morning or emailed. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Don, and thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
During the Fall Fest, but there's also a link you can monetarily.
All right, uh, we have, uh, one matter for, uh, executive session that will be quick. Thank you. We need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We need a motion to go on executive session.
Sorry.
For what?
For what? Uh, personal, personal matter. Sorry. Just jumping the gun there.
Go into executive session for personal matter.
All those are favor. Any opposed? Thanks, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna.
Jumping the gun there.
I'm gonna. I gave you a wedding.
Yeah, I was sleeping, I was sleeping.
I didn't know. Sorry about that.
It's okay. It's not your fault.
I like Kansas City Chiefs, but all I can say, two each and zone.
There you go.
I also like Pittsburgh and Philadelphia.
They're okay.
Thanks, Bill. I'm good.
All right, I can go back.
Yes. A lot of signatures. Thank you very much.
During the PTA Fall Fest, it's Saturday, they're gonna have a lot of donations for the food.
That's funny. I already went up the food bank, got the plate and just saved a few. Drink some.
Yeah. We appreciate it.
If there's any updates, let me know.
Thank you very much.
We're on vacations now, right? When's the next vacation? Sorry.
I apologize.
I love that.
I thought you were gonna say something like. Oh, yeah?
I thought I wasn't spooked to do that. Well, I didn't.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Mary Jane, are you going down the stairs?
Yeah.
Could you, can you shut that door for me? The one, it was just that door and the one down at the bottom stairs. Thank you. You know, if the school's doing that, you wanna take some of them, last year we had, we built a whole trailer for Sacred Heart, you know, take some.
Well, so that was, well, one thing.
I didn't know the school was doing it like this.
Yeah, I mean, can we, can we?
Who knows?
I mean, if the school has a food pantry, can, can we use the funds?
Well, we, it's already, they already, the railroad already has it set up for.
So the only thing, and I can find this out, the problem with it was that they were, they don't have the space, right, to, to have it all. Um, so I just have to make sure that like if we were gonna have an, especially since they're gonna collect this weekend and they're gonna keep collecting, like whether they could, if they could take it and whether they would love it.
Well, I can, because last year we sold a, a trailer full of stuff.
Yeah.
And last time.
Do they have space for that?
That, no, they won't have space for that much now. So.
No, we can, but we can do this.
Split it half and half.
Half and half or quarter and three quarters. I mean, and we don't even have to fill this church. The church don't even know.
And then just the, the monetary donation will go to Catholic charities. Yeah. So it's Catholic charities now. Because.
The Sacred Heart is close.
Don't, don't say anything else. I don't think I turned off the voice.